I'm here in a home, I hope everybody had a ... items of interest in the mayor, city council, city manager. And I guess I'll start that out by saying, let's see, last week there was a groundbreaking for Hop Valley. Got to do that, that was fine with Mayor. Japanese delegation was here and I guess you guys can share the dinner. They came to City Hall and greeted them here. This afternoon, city manager and I got to meet the CEO from Peace Health, John Hill. That was a good meeting. The Lane County Act is still proceeding through the STIP process. That's the State Transportation something or rather.
In just priorities or something?
Yeah. There's a step into Stories dedication at the Over Park on Friday, which is literary things in our parking structures. I guess the bad news of the week is that it appears that on Thursday we will lose 35 more jail beds, which is more loss on top of more loss and more problem on top of more problem. And then tomorrow, you've all been invited to come and be part of the conversation with the Board of County Commissioners at 1:30 about La Rapa, for those of you who can make it to that. So, and then my final thing is I have a, I think we sent out an email, but the holidays and maybe nobody's paying attention, I'm just going to ask you all to think about when you do your appointments, do committees, and you get it all settled and then somebody for some reason can't continue on that committee, how you're going to address that. And from my perspective, I think we've been doing it in a bit of an ad hoc way and I think it should be done sort of in a uniform way so that we do the same thing every time something like that occurs. So, I'm hoping that one of you will bring back a motion on Wednesday that we can, because the Willamette Committee, Park Committee, it has an opening. They want to put someone in, you got notice of that. And my only concern about that is that if we did things as we had been doing them, that we would just make a decision based on what they want as opposed to a way that we deal with those every time. So, I hope one of you will, maybe Council President, you'll look into that.
Yes, I can do that, Mayor.
All right, go ahead.
Well, I didn't, I haven't had any committee meetings since my last report of about three or four weeks ago, so nothing new there. I did greet the Help the Mayor on Wednesday, greet the Kakagawa delegation at City Hall, great group of people. And Councilor Clark and I went to the dinner on Friday night and that was also a lot of fun. And I'd like to go there sometimes, it sounds like a neat thing. And that's really about it. Thanks.
George?
Yeah, the only thing I would like to bring up is again, this winter break for the school, the Harlow Serves will be doing their food collection and giving, putting together food bags for the children at Holt Elementary that qualify for the meals based on family incomes. Last, last winter, I believe it was 7,000 or 700 individual meals were put together from donations from people within the community. So, if the people in the Harlow Neighborhood Association area want to get involved with that, they can go online at harlowserves.com, I believe, or get ahold of the Harlow Neighborhood Associations or Pastor Aaron at North Park Community Church.
Great, nice thing for them to do. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I had a chance to attend a Police Commission meeting here a couple of weeks ago and I think I'll probably defer to our newest member of the Police Commission to give a more thorough report on that meeting here. I'll put her on the spot with that.
All right.
I also had the chance here, as George mentioned, to meet with the Kakagawa delegation the other evening for dinner and that was really wonderful, enjoyed that very much. And I think we had a good time and a good exchange with the folks from Kakagawa that were here. Have enjoyed the process of serving with Councilors Pryor and Zelenka on the City Hall Subcommittee. I think we've done a lot of, I think we had a lot of very in-depth and very serious and very, very, you know, important and worthwhile discussions on that Subcommittee. I think we did some good work with all the staff help that we had and it was greatly appreciated.
I just wanted to say that thank you so much for you guys going to the Kakagawa dinner, that was great. And, you know, for them, that's a truly American celebration. It's not, it's uniquely ours and so it gives them insights into our culture they wouldn't get it with any other, visit any other time of year. So, thanks for making it so nice for them.
Yes, so I've been doing my share of meetings. I attended the Trainsong Neighborhood Association meeting week before last and talked through a little bit about the Opportunity Village sighting and the process there and talked through some of their concerns, although generally the Board hasn't taken a formal position, so it's mixed opinion. But there's definitely some support too for the North Garfield site. I had a very thorough, great orientation with Fire Chief and EMS and appreciated that very much. And staff has been setting me up with orientations with all the departments as we get into December and very much appreciate city staff's work on that as well. Got to dig some dirt at the Hop Valley groundbreaking and got a beer. I did not drink, took it home to my husband that night. And attended the Police Commission meeting, which was interesting. And one of the things we discussed there and we didn't really come to a final decision there was looking at requesting some representation from the Police Commission on the committee that the city manager will be forming to look at the downtown exclusion zone and recommendations for phasing that out. So, we discussed that quite a bit. Also, attended the Human Services Commission meeting where we are looking at upcoming funding decisions and looking at how we're going to do allocations for this coming year and that intersects with our homeless winter strategies discussion as well. And then today I had a great meeting with two city staffers on the skate park project in Washington Jefferson Park and got a nice briefing on that and some ideas on how we can be supportive, including how my organization, Lane Coalition for Healthy Active Youth, can get involved as a nonprofit as part of that project. So, good stuff there.
Ellen?
Yeah, I attended the Lower Hole Valley Citizens Neighbors meeting and gave them a bunch of updates on what we were doing and they thought we were doing good stuff. I did want to talk about this magazine that I got. I was wandering through, I was in Southern California in the airport and I came across this magazine and it says, "It's Global Warming, Stupid." And it struck my eye because I think this is one of the issues of our time. And unless you think this is some kind of environmental magazine, it's actually Bloomberg's Business Week. But I just wanted to spend a couple of minutes and just read an excerpt from here because I thought it was very illustrative and I learned quite a bit from it. And it's just kind of a long article, but it points to a couple of experts in the field and one of them was Jonathan Foley, who's the Director of the Institute of Environment at the University of Minnesota. And he wrote that, when he was talking about Sandy in New York and the devastation that that occurred and the fact that that might be as high as $50 billion in damage, and he was talking about its relationship to Sandy, the hurricane, to climate change and global warming. And he said, "Would this kind of storm happen without climate change? Yes, fueled by many factors. Is storm stronger because of climate change? Yes." And Eric Pooley, Senior Vice President of Environmental Defense Fund and former Deputy Editor of Bloomberg's Business Week, this magazine, offered up a baseball analogy and he said, "We can say that steroids caused any one homerun by Barry Bonds, but steroids sure helped him hit more and hit them further. And now we have weather on steroids." I thought that was a very apt analogy because that's what happens with climate change. The energy tapped in the atmosphere is creating stronger and more frequent large storm events. And one of the things that struck my eye in this article was also a report by Munich Re, which is a reinsurance agency from Germany. And they issued a report just before that storm called Severe Weather in North America and it said that the global rate of extreme weather events is rising and nowhere else in the world is the rising number of natural catastrophes more evident than in North America. They've seen nearly a quintupled number of weather-related storm events in North America. And they're the folks that insure the insurance companies. And they said, "In particular, global warming affects formation of heat waves, droughts, intense precipitation events, and in the long run, most probably also tropical cyclone intensity." This July was the hottest month recorded in U.S. history since they kept, since the record-keeping began in 1895, according to NOAA. And the U.S. Drought Monitor Report reported that 2/3 of the continent in the U.S. was suffering from drought conditions this summer. And I think this is kind of apt to kind of bring it into focus. I think this is the issue of our time and helps understanding of how that relates to these things that we're seeing around in our environment.
Great, Chris?
Thank you. I am very pleased that there were folks who were able to do the Kakagawa visit. I unfortunately had work, so I couldn't be there. I would have loved to have been there. Some of the folks I know, they've been over and over again. And I'm particularly pleased you were able to do the dinner because they hold that in very high regard, the dinner. And so, having Councilors there, I think, and the mayor was a great show of friendship as well as respect. The, I would reinforce what Councilor Clark was saying about the City Hall Committee. I think we've done really good work and have brought a well-formed next step of the discussion to the rest of the council to talk about. So, I look forward to that. I was just saying earlier, when you feel like you're in borrowed space, you want to try to not overwear your welcome. So, that gives us a real encouragement to find a good solution for the City Hall. Housing Policy Board has been meeting. They will be bringing back to the council some recommendations on some home funding options. We're doing things a little bit differently this time because we don't have right now a site on which to build something, so we're looking at some alternative kind of ideas. And so, that's something kind of interesting and so we'll be able to talk about a little different perspective. And then ElCog will be having their meeting in December. That will be my last meeting as Chair, so I'm looking forward to that. And I would, yeah, and I would tell you that Brenda is doing a fabulous job. I mean, she's performing beyond what our wildest expectations were. And so, I think ElCog is really on a great track. They're really starting to get some organization and some structure and they're really working on some very important things. So, I'm very pleased to report to you that everything we hoped ElCog would be able to do, they are doing. And that Brenda has been performing incredibly well.
How?
Thank you, Mayor. I had a chance, I was at the HSC meeting along with Councilor Surratt. And we, a number of things, one thing that jumped out is the shifting of how funding is prioritized locally based upon a decision that's been predicated by HUD regarding money has been, the strategy is to move all the programs into permanent housing as opposed to emergency and transitionary housing. So, you're going to see some significant differences in how housing is funded locally because of the decisions that have been made at a higher level than county or state. And I had a chance to sit in on the Board of Health meeting last week and heard some pretty alarming numbers about what's causing us to be unhealthy. And I realized that cigarette smoking was a bad thing. I didn't realize that it accounted for 24% of all deaths, not only in Lane County, but in Oregon and in the United States, fairly across the board, 24% of all deaths. So, the quote that I wrote down by Pat Ledkew was, "If we could bump out, bump our tobacco rates down just a few percent, we could save a significant amount of money." And he meant on healthcare and on emergency healthcare and on healthcare that's subsidized by other than insurance companies. So, cigarette smoking is a pretty significant issue and as you look at the numbers, and the numbers become more and more evident that really that's one of the main issues that we have is cutting down in particular teen cigarette smoking and marketing to teenagers. The other thing that came out, Rick Kincaid, a doctor from Medicaid, from Peace Health, was talking also. And he pointed out a couple of things regarding healthcare and regarding people who are in the most urgent need for healthcare and that his feeling, and he cited some numbers, that poverty is one of the main driving forces behind healthcare issues. And poverty is of course rampant in Lane County. We have a high poverty rate, as you can tell by the number of free and reduced rate lunches that are provided by the schools in the county. And, you know, I'm sorry, it wasn't Rick Kincaid that said that, it was, I believe it was Pat Ledkew that said that. But as we address poverty, then that's one of the greatest things that we can do as a council and as a community is to address poverty every way that we can, to get people into good jobs, into housing and into medical care. The other thing that I did last week was I had a chance to visit for a second time in the last month, the Lane County Historical Museum. What a wonderful gem that is, if you've not been there lately. It's, it really is remarkable, some of the things that are in there, including a wagon that came across, it's in almost its original state, it came across in pre-civil war and in the late 1850s. And, yeah, '56, exactly. And it's remarkable how much stuff they have in there. Of course, the Lane County Museum needs a little bit of help from everybody who can help it and more to come. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
Just a couple of quick items. One, on the 17th Saturday, I was with 45 to 50 other employees and we planted 150 trees out at Maury Jacobs Park as part of our legacy for our 150th birthday. And so, in 50 years, we're all, we are all invited to go back and take a look and see where they are at that point. And some of the kids there hopefully will. And then just as part of International Human Rights Day, on the 5th, Wednesday, December 5th, from 5:30 to 8, there'll be a community celebration over at the atrium. So, we would encourage people to join us there. We'll send out more information to the council on that and any other activity that's a part of that. So, that's coming up as well. And of course, the city is very involved both in planning and participating.
I think I just wanted to express on behalf of all of us, a big thanks about the tree planting from staff. And I've been kind of worried lately because I think we have had a little bit more of a challenge to replace some of our aging trees. So, it really is, is good to hear about that planting and know we keep on moving forward because I can't imagine Eugene not being noted for its urban forests. So, very, very important. And the other thing, you helped me with the city manager, but when we were over at Peace Health this afternoon, they were talking about, they've done a very, very in-depth community needs report, I believe, and we've had them before, United Way's done them, but this is a really, really in-depth and I think it's going to give us a lot more information that can inform the work that the council has to do. And I mentioned in this afternoon that we've several times lately tried to bring in some experts to kind of give us some information that we might not have otherwise to help inform our decision-making. There might be some opportunity for that with this too because we are going to be facing, I think that leads right into our next item, we are going to be facing a lot of financial challenges that have impacted our ability to provide service and help people in times of need. So, we're going to have to be very pointed about how we, how we use our resources. Thank you. And so, that'll just take us right on into the work session, financial strategy, and we will move forward.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll turn it over to Sue in just a moment and then I'll kind of finish up the presentation. Today is, we wanted to talk about the forecast. We do this every year just to start setting the stage of where we are from a budget perspective and what are the challenges that are before us that as a, as a group council staff and the Budget Committee will need to address as we move forward into the spring. I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. And just, this is a part of our ongoing conversations that we started really several months ago to start introducing the budget for FY14, knowing that we were going to have some challenges. Last week or two weeks ago, we kind of kicked it off again for this season and just a brief introduction. And so, this is a continuing part of the conversation. We'll have another conversation later on in December. And then of course, as we go into the new year, we'll be having several conversations as we put together a budget for FY14. So, Sue, why don't you take us through the forecast?
Sure. As you know, we, and as John mentioned, we always do a forecast at the start of our budget season. I'm not going to give you that same kind of an in-depth presentation today because really we just wanted to give you a brief update on where we think we are financially so that you can think more about your financial strategies going forward. And we'll do that more in-depth presentation when we get to the Budget Committee meeting. So, let's see. Oh, I have to turn it on, sorry. There we go. Okay, so, on the left-hand side is a reminder of where we were when we left the FY13 budget conversation. We had put together a two-year plan to close a $7 million gap. We had closed about $4 million of that in the FY13 budget, which left us about a $3 million gap between our revenues and expenditures last spring. We've updated the forecast now, incorporated all the various factors that go into the general fund's financial condition, and we're now showing that that gap has approximately doubled to a little over $6 million. And just as a reminder, the budget gap is really the estimated amount of actions we would have to take next fiscal year in order to accomplish our two financial goals, one of which is to make sure our revenues are greater than or equal to our expenditures each year. And the second is to make sure that we maintain an 8% prudent reserve. So, as we've talked about before, property taxes are about 2/3 of our total revenues in the general fund. And so, any change in that item can really have a significant impact on the forecast. And that is indeed the case here. The single largest change between the forecast we had in last May and the forecast we have now is that we've significantly reduced our expectations of property taxes. The FY13, so the current year property tax figure that we included in the budget is about $800,000 more than what we are now expecting to receive after getting information from the tax assessor about this year's tax bills. So, you may remember, we don't know that information when we build the budget and we get that information around the beginning of November. So, that $800,000 reduction affects both this year and all of your future years. We've also reduced the expectation of future growth rates in our property tax revenues. And that's based on the continuing impacts of the financial downturn and also the impacts of our state property tax system and how that works. So, overall, when we roll in our new property tax assumptions, it's about a $3 million increase in our budget gap. So, that pretty much accounts for the difference between the $3 and $6 million budget deficit. And a lot of other factors were updated, some were a little better than before, some were a little worse than before, but really this was by far the single largest item. So, here's just a little bit more detail about our property tax projections. The line on the top was what we were projecting for future years in property taxes last spring. The dark line, kind of in the middle, is what we're now projecting as our property tax revenues over the next six years. But we recognize that there's a lot of uncertainty about what those revenues will be in the future, what will happen with the economy, how the dynamics of our tax system will work and so on. So, I just wanted to flag for you that, you know, the further we go out in time, the more uncertain our property tax revenues will be. But we're, we have definitely lowered our expectations. Another important part of our financial strategy is maintaining a prudent reserve, which we've set at a target of 8% of our expenditures. If we do nothing to solve our budget gap in FY14, that red line that says base case is where we would be. We'd be out of reserves in FY15 and we'd be almost $30 million in the hole by the end of this forecast period. The dark solid line on the top is what we're hoping to achieve with an FY14 budget strategy that gets us to a stable budget where our revenues and expenditures are approximately equal. And so, now I'm going to turn it over to John to talk about how we might do that.
We introduced this slide last time we were here a couple of weeks ago and part of it's just a reminder where we've been and foreshadowing where we're headed. If you take a look along the blue arrows, we start off with what has been really important. The blue arrows are the strategies that we've been pursuing in the last four years and pursuing very aggressively to close gaps, control costs. And just as a reminder, up to this point, we've closed a combined general fund gap of $24 million and that's out of a general fund that's between 120, 125 million. So, you're talking about 20%. And our organizational footprint has decreased by 120 positions. And so, a lot of that has to do with how do we continue to live within our means, meaning among other things, we're using ongoing money for ongoing costs, we're not taking away from the reserve, one-time money for ongoing costs, we're trying to match revenues with expenditures. And we've been doing that all along. And we've said we also have to maintain an appropriate reserve and Sue talked about that briefly. And an important part of that has to do with those monies enable us to help mitigate the transitions from year to year as we go through this recession. And so, we're not having to make as dramatic of cuts or changes because we're able to maintain that prudent reserve. We're going to continue to do that as we go forward. We are going to continue to take a look at how to live within our means and maintain our reserves. We've also said that we can't just rely on the expenditure side of the equation, but we also want to try to continue to create economic prosperity. What that really means is, is how do we increase the tax base? Not by virtue of how much property tax can be increased each year legislatively, but because we are encouraging development and redevelopment of properties within, inside our city boundaries, which they can add to the tax base. And so, we want to continue to do that. We'll have a little bit more of that conversation leading into our supplemental budget and I'll send something out in the next week or so because in that supplemental budget, there's a couple of one-time dollars, which we think we can, if you choose to continue this strategy in a really proactive way. So, that's one of our strategies that we need to continue to do. But we've also said that throughout this recession, we don't want to just focus inwardly into the city, but we want to continue to invest for the long-term health of the community. And so, we've done that in a variety of ways. Of course, a lot of conversation around City Hall and we'll be continuing to do that and investing the dollars that we've saved and are able to put together for that project. We've also worked hard at reducing property crime. In the last couple of years, we've added police officers into the downtown. Police chief is working through data-led policing. We've also actually invested in additional jail beds from a city perspective, both in Springfield and with the county. And so, that has been an ongoing investment. The voters just recently renewed our bond for street repairs and maintenance and that's a great long-term investment. We're investing in downtown with our business loan funds in a variety of ways to encourage that and there's a lot of activity that's continuing to take place. We're investing in human services. I think last week is a good example where this council has said, "We need to continue to invest in," in this case, "in homelessness and trying to mitigate some of those impacts." And so, we're continuing to invest in those. The fire department through their merger conversation is continuing to figure out ways to improve operations into the community. So, we want to continue the investment into these community goals even as we try to work through this six-plus million-dollar budget gap. We've also said we need to control costs and that's how we've been working over the last four years. We have continually driven down the expenditure line. And so, as Sue talks about moving forward, our expenditure line continues to move downward and we'll continue to work on that this year. The issue really is, is that the property taxes have not been coming back as optimistically as we'd hoped. And so, that's really a significant issue, which part of the economic And so that's really a significant issue, which partly the economic prosperity needs to work on that. But we've been working at slowing the growth in our expenditures. We've been identifying partnerships and working in new ways and in different models to try to continue to save dollars as we go forward for the long term. With all of that, what the council has said is, we also need to think about revenues. And is that a part of a strategy for our long-term, stable budget and potentially sustainable budget? And really, the stable budget is, is how do we continue the services that we're providing right now? Sustainable budget really is, how do we provide the services for some things that maybe we aren't providing right now? It could be ongoing parks maintenance, and if we're developing new parks, it could be facilities maintenance. We've talked about human services and all those kinds of things. So that's part of the conversation that we hope to continue to have over the next weeks and months as part of this budget conversation. So that's the new piece of the financial strategy. And we talked about this really way back at the end of the summer, beginning of the summer, I don't remember when, but what we said is, we're preparing two different budgets within the organization. One, a budget that we've, that would be similar to what we've done the last four years, no assumptions around new revenues, and we're just saying, how do we go ahead and fill that gap, given the portfolio of services we have, and how can we best continue those? Remember, our objectives haven't changed. We still want to maintain services into the community. So that's one. Option A is doing that. But we're also wanting to take a look at a second budget. If the council chooses new revenue as a possibility for the budget strategy, and it could be putting something out for a vote or not, we also want to, or would prepare, a budget that incorporates new revenue, if that's where you choose to go. And so really, the options we look at is focusing strictly on the expenditure side, trying to cover the entire gap with revenues, or what we're really thinking, it's potentially a combination option C, where we're still needing to drive down costs, and we'll continue to do that, but there's a point at which there's some significant trade-offs that would have to be made. And just as an example of that, if you were to take a look at, and I didn't put it up here because it's too much, but in the packet, there's a memo that we actually put out to the Budget Committee last year. I want to emphasize, this was just information that was provided to the Budget Committee last year. The list to fill the gap may or may not be this exact list, so I just want to make sure people are clear on that. But what it does do, which is important, is starts to describe the magnitude of, when we talk about $6 million, when we talk about the kinds of things that are, that could be on the list, it's not necessarily just onesie-twosie, because as we've talked about in the past, you know, if you were going to close a pool, you may capture $400,000 or $500,000, which isn't the entire $6 million. But this is more about magnitude, not specifics around that. So I want to make sure people are okay with that. And really, the next steps for us are, on December 10th, we'd like to come back and have some more conversations around the strategies to include new revenue. And from our perspective, the sooner that the council can decide which of those options, A, B, and C, you want us to move towards, doesn't have to, we don't have to know the specifics of it, the more, the work that we can do upfront. And so, for example, if you, if you choose to put something out for a vote in May, the decision will need to be made sometime in February in order to make those timelines. So we're, we're wanting to continue to have those conversations in a thoughtful way, but there is some timing as we go through that. And so we'll continue that in December and then into January. So, that's our strategy as we're moving forward, and hoping for questions and thoughts and comments.
Got Mike in the queue.
Thank you, Mayor, very much. I appreciate the information, John, and that Sue and the hard work staff's done to kind of take a look at this on an ongoing basis the way you do. I brought up something a couple of times, and I appreciate the option of the A, B, and C choices. I think that the C choice provides some opportunity for some good discussion, but probably the likely path that we'll take. I like the idea that you've put the options before the council as kind of a framework for the discussion. I'm in favor of the idea of new revenues, but here's the thing, we always talk about new revenues in one way. And I've brought this up a couple of times, and it's kind of difficult for me when we, when we make assumptions about new revenues. We're talking about having a discussion about how to add new taxes to citizens in the city. My personal opinion is that this is the exact wrong time to do that, that anything on the ballot would likely fail, and that it would hurt our local economy to do so at this time. But what we're not talking about is, if we're, for example, the $800,000 are off. If my calculations are right, and they may not be here, I did decently in math, but we'll see, at $750,000, we need approximately $107 million of additional property value added within the city limits in order to make up that difference, right? Roughly?
Where's the $800,000? I didn't get the $800,000.
What she talked about at the beginning.
That we're short this, this fiscal year.
This next fiscal.
Oh, God.
The current year that we're in.
Okay. So why aren't we talking about strategies to add $107 million worth of property value within the city limits? Because that would increase the revenue. We're in the middle of the process of Envision Eugene, looking at new land to bring into the UGB. We're talking about this in ways that we all understand is likely to add some new land to the UGB, but we're not taking that next step and having the conversation about how to bring that within the city limits, or the kinds of strategies that we might take to increase particular values, or particular businesses, or particular assets that would increase our property value. Because I think that's the appropriate way for us to look at how to increase revenues, is how to increase the value to everybody in the community.
Yes, and I think, so when you look at the economic prosperity piece, and this, we'll, we'll talk more about this, particularly as we move into the supplemental budget, coming back to you. We would, and I would also agree, that part of the conversation has to be, how do you increase that tax base by $100 million, or $200,000, or $250 million? And that definitely needs to be a part of a sustainable budget. It's not going to be captured quick enough to create the stable budget in the next few years, but we are doing some things. So for example...
How come, if you don't mind my asking?
I think the timing of how the development comes into the community, you know, $100 million of taxes, the equivalent of Valley River Center, and so, I think, right, assessed value, something like that. So it's, it's a, it's a large number, which we need to be working on for the sustainable future, but we're not going to get four new Valley River Center equivalents in the next four years, for example. But...
If you'll forgive me, I apologize. If we're going to accomplish our regional economic growth goals of adding 20,000 new jobs and increasing marginal incomes, as we've said we want to do, how in the world can we do it if we don't have reasonable strategies to try and accomplish that within the next two years?
Right, so I was going to talk about one example of the strategy we're moving towards, which won't be the only. If you remember, part of when we talked about the credit union and the property over there next to the courthouse, part of what we said there was, is not having them pay SDCs, that the Urban Renewal District would pay the SDCs, and the thinking around that was, is that the SDCs will get put into the fund because we need the infrastructure, but really what we're doing is, we're, in that case, it's urban renewal dollars, but we've also talked about, when we talk about Envision Eugene...
Short-term gain or long-term gain.
Envision Eugene corridors and core commercial areas, are there some investments in businesses that people bring in that we actually would want to waive, summer all of those SDCs, and they just, our future city dollars would go into the SDC fund? So that would be a specific strategy that we'll actually have more conversation about as we try to pump up that economic prosperity side of the equation. I think there's some other things about increasing our business loan fund, which is very successful, and putting some more dollars into that, so we'll have some more of those conversations.
Well, I appreciate you, I'm asking you some pretty tough questions. I'm not trying to be hard on you, but I think this is a tough subject. So I'd like to see us approaching this from the standpoint of adding value in the, to the, inside the city limits. And it's not just economic development, which I think we need to do, but also just essential land. Thank you, Mayor.
Chris?
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate that. I think having an economic development and other strategies is definitely essential to what we want to do, and I think we need to be aggressive in how we pursue that. Those are elements that are not necessarily within our direct control. You know, you can't demand that a business move here, or you can't demand that something expand, but you can provide the fertile soil in which it can grow, and that's, I think, where we'll get our most traction. How long that takes, though, becomes the question. Can it happen quickly? Can it happen slowly? We don't control when it happens, to some degree, we do to others, and making the ground fertile is the best way to do that. So my mind then thinks, what are those things which do have greater certainty in the shorter term, which is, I think, what we're talking about now? As you pursue the longer term, less certain but still desirable things, what can we do in the short term that we control and can give us greater certainty? It's a balance of both of those, and I think that's kind of what we're trying to find right here. So I think if we want to consider options within our control, a good point, those options within our control are also options where we have to demonstrate kind of the accountability and the authority to say, we have done everything in our power to have avoided having to take that step, if it's possible. And that's a lead-up to say, I think the last few years have directly demonstrated that we have vigorously looked under every rock. We have tried to make every economy that we can without creating a tremendous impact on the services we deliver. In other words, you've tried to do the best job you can, looking for every waste, every cut, every reduction that you can, that doesn't create this in-your-face result with the community. My point is, after doing it for as many years as we can, we can't do that anymore. We've run out of those options, and we're now at the point where, in your A, B, and C scenarios, if you want to go with A, we're now having to confront eliminating entire programs. I mean, boom, cutting the whole thing out, because you can't get to $6 million in tiny little increments anymore. You're now talking about getting to $6 million by eliminating entire functions. Death by 1,000 cuts doesn't work after a certain point. For me, that's a conversation we can have, we can certainly have it, but I, when we've tried to have that conversation before, it's proved very difficult. So I think we have to look at revenue, but we have to look at revenue fully confronting the fact that we're only coming to it reluctantly, but we're coming to it because we feel we have to in order to maintain the kind of community we want to have, where you don't cut out entire programs that some people feel are valuable. That was a long lead-up to, I want to go into that discussion intentionally, I want to go into it sincerely, I don't want to be disingenuous about it, but I think we do have to have that conversation about some form of additional revenue.
And I guess I would just like to add to that conversation, that we're talking about having an additional economic summits and bringing more partners to the table to look at how we add more things to our table in that regard. And then the other thing that I think we have to bring to the table, a discussion we have not fully had yet, is how do we want to move in terms of the Russell Creek area, the, and that kind of, what's happening with LCC and all of that kind of stuff, and what role does Eugene want to have in that or not? So that's, that's something that has to come into play in that, because that is a potential economic development area and in coordination with some other things that are going on there, but we have only kind of danced around that to this juncture. So it will be probably up to you to indicate whether you have some interest in really, you're looking at me...
I don't know what you're talking about.
So LCC has a plan, a long-term plan.
Thanks for reading my mind.
LCC has a long-term plan for some major development there. If they're, this, we're talking about some infrastructure things that would have to be dealt with, you're talking about whether we bring them into our urban growth boundary. I mean, you're talking big things, and you have to decide, this council would have to decide if they think of all the choices we have, that's something that would be the most palatable, the best for our community. We have not had that discussion yet. We're still pretty much, I mean, it's on the list of things to look at, and with a couple of other things to look at. And then you've got the county's interest in the Goshen area, which kind of combines with that too, which is another very long-time thing, but this is a, this is a discussion where you can make progress, but it's got to be a long-term commitment and goal for where you want to go, and we haven't really sorted through all the pros and cons yet to know, I think, where we, where we would land as a council yet on that. So, but I think it's got, it's got to be part of the discussion, and it's got to be part of the discussion, because everybody else is talking about it, so, including our neighboring cities, and the county, and the state, and the regional solutions folks, and everybody's talking about it, so we might as well bring that into our conversation as well. Pat?
You know, I drove out of Junction City today, and there's a new traffic light going on, on Highway 99. At Milliron Road, and Milliron Road's a little old farm road that used to go kind of from nowhere to nowhere. There's a traffic light going in there. And of course, that is a mile and a half inside of the Junction City open road, or city limits, excuse me, not the open road, about a mile, I think, inside the limits. So, as you're right, Mayor, our neighboring communities are very interested in economic prosperity, and a part of their economic prosperity is something that you discussed, John, and that is increasing, let's see, continue to increase the tax base, not legislatively or by what the state is going to do, but by using property inside of our urban growth boundary. Well, the discussion that we've had quite often is making certain that we're able to accommodate the growth of companies that exist here already. We don't have a very good record, and I don't need to rehash that, you know, we can enlist the companies that have had to move outside of our urban growth boundary to develop their companies further. So I think we're moving in the right direction by beginning to allow more land for companies to, for local companies, existing companies to expand. That's the best way to increase our tax base, is to allow people who want to stay here and grow here, to stay here and grow here, rather than step outside the UGB. A traffic light at Milliron Road, for crying out loud. It's remarkable that that kind of growth is going on within sight. You can stand on, you know, stand at the airport and see this happening, and see the pipes and everything going on out there, and if we're not careful, that is going to come into us, and the mayor talks about the Russell Creek Basin and the longer-term effects of looking at Goshen. But so make certain that we are able to accommodate, first off, local companies' growth, and second off, if other companies do choose to locate here, give them a place to locate. I think, John, that you are doing a very good job through your seven pillars and through what we're doing, moving forward with the, with Envision Eugene. But you know, we've been talking about it for a long time, and now we're wringing our hands about a $6 million gap, and how do we add Valley River Center, when all the time, we could have been adding the briar shop here, and the briar shop there, you know, and we've just kind of turned our back to it. We're now starting to look at it, and I encourage, and I hope that the city council will continue to look hard. What do we do to make sure that in 10 years, we're not wringing our hands again, because we didn't do what we needed to do today? As far as revenues are concerned, I just have a few more seconds here, anything we do as far as land use and new revenues, of course, have to be looked at in a larger picture as to what are our neighboring jurisdictions or overlapping jurisdictions doing. On the May ballot, the May ballot may get pretty crowded pretty quick if everybody begins to do what they talk about maybe they're going to do in May, and at some point, people are just going to say no to everything.
Anyone else? Alan?
So, yeah, I agree that we do need to, and we do have, an economic development strategy and a prosperity plan to grow the economy, increase the tax base, and we will be doing that, and we have been doing that. It's not an easy thing to do. Nobody's had the magic pixie dust to sprinkle over Lane County, or any other county in the United States for that matter, to be able to jumpstart our economy and grow it at the pace that we all want to see it grow. And that, it's not, it's just not easy, and it's not going to happen very quickly. I think we're in a long, slow, drawn-out economic growth period, which isn't going to see the prosperity that we saw in previous, previous years. And I think all of that takes a lot of time, and as Councilor Pryor... And, and I think all of that takes a lot of time, and as Councilor Pryor said, it's largely out of our control. We have, we are in the process of adding the land inventory through the Envision Eugene. So I think the Envision Eugene, the prosperity plan combined get us to where we are creating the fertile ground to be able to have this happen, but it's not going to happen anytime short, in the short term. I thought that the Milliron Signal was actually put in there because of the hospital and the, and the prison, not because of any private economic developments, large state project that would require us to be able to, to control the traffic there. So, because I, I agree with what Councilor Pryor was saying, which is that this is, we need to look at this in, in the context of what we can do in the short term. And the reality is, in the near term, we're going to be faced with a $6 million deficit on an annual, ongoing basis. If we take a look at this list of projects, or list of current services that we'd have to eliminate to balance the budget without new revenues, this list doesn't even come to $6 million. I, just a quick back-of-the-envelope, four and a half to five and a half million dollars or so, 5.8 million dollars total, total, and these are pretty, this is significant, things would go away. Would be a dramatic change in the way that, the way that we do business, in the way that we provide services in the city of Eugene. And I think the reality is, is that this economy is going to stay limping along but doing okay. And unless, and I think we owe it to citizens to look at revenue strategies that would prevent this kind of deep cuts into the services that we all want to provide. So I'm anxious to look into that and look at how that, we might do that in the very near future, and what it would take to be able to do that.
I guess I would just add to that, that none of these discussions are in isolation of our other goals, of what's important to protect, what's, what we value, that we want to keep in our, for our community, and for our state, and for our nation. So you have to sort of try to do all of these things at the same time. There's a lot of pulling and tugging, and it's very, it's not easy. But I think it's important, important work. Pat, you're next, and then Chris.
Thank you. Magic fairy dust.
Pixie.
Pixie dust.
I'm sure pixie ducks.
They're a little yellow and green sprinkled dust.
And, you know, there's, clearly, there's nothing we can do to immediately restart the economy. But gosh, if we, doing things immediately are not, it's not going to happen, because, you know, we're doing everything that we can do on an immediate basis. But what we owe future councils is to be making the right decisions now, that 10 years from now, they're not having this financial strategies discussion and saying, oh, we can't fix things immediately. Oh, if they'd only thought about it 10 years ago.
What were they thinking?
What weren't they thinking? You know, that's, so, you know, let's be thinking about it now, so that, do the people in the future a favor that, that, you know, they don't have to worry about immediate strategies. John, you mentioned more or less building a trust for the future by, by paying SDCs currently, and you, you mentioned doing it for the, for the credit union, and the possibility of doing that for other companies down the road. Whenever we do that, we do essentially build what is a trust for the future. By putting some, putting an investment in upfront, you're getting years and years and years of payoff that pays into perpetuity, pays off into the future. And I, I welcome and applaud that, that consideration, that strategy, and hope that the council will be looking at that and allowing a good, strong look at how that can best be utilized for the future. And making certain that, we keep an eye on what's going to happen 10 years from now, instead of penciling out what's happening today, saying, oh, that's going to cost X number of dollars today, and we don't have that money today. Once again, building for the future, so that future councils don't have to have this discussion. The, following through with Envision Eugene, Alan, yeah, that's definitely, that's definitely going to help people in the future. But if we'd done something like that five or six years ago, then companies who relocated outside of the urban growth boundary just recently may not, probably would not have done so, and thereby increased our tax base inside the urban growth boundary. So I think making sure that we remember that we're not only thinking about today, but thinking about what future, what the decisions that future councils are going to have to make based upon decisions that this council will make in the upcoming 12 or 24 months.
You bring up a good point, Pat, because I think the other thing is that while we're trying to make, grow our own tax base, we live in a region, and there will always have to be an eye on a regional strategy. And on one hand, you want to build your own base, but on the other hand, it's not necessarily your loss when someone else gains, because you're building up the economy for the whole region. And when the economy for the whole region rises, we all prosper better together. So some of those are difficult questions, but I think you would be the first to say that if, let's say, a potential outside of our area development that employed our folks, and that we may have things that come out of that, that arrive in our community, helps us all. So we have to kind of, that's what the act is about, actually, is, is having us have an eye on what's happening in a positive way to the cities around us and the whole county, and how we all work together to lift all of our, all of our boats. And so we have to look after ourselves, but we have to look after our, our region, because we all suffer if things go wrong for our neighbors. Any other comments on this? Any?
Maybe to kind of say, how could we approach, starting to talk about this next? I mean, what, what comes next? And thinking back to something I was saying earlier, it's always been a difficult conversation when we talk about, what are we willing to give up if we don't have enough money to pay for it? And I realize how difficult that conversation is, because we don't really want to give up anything. And there's always a constituency to support everything we do, and that's great. We may have to have at least some kind of conversation like that, because it's a just-in-case discussion we may have to have. And figuring out a way to do that. Maybe it's less of a budget discussion than it is kind of a family budget kind of discussion, where we have to say, what can we economize on? But maybe also, a positive way we can have this conversation would be to not say, what falls off the bottom, but maybe come at it from what rises to the top. And that could be, if we're going to talk about new revenues, what are those things that float to the top as being worthy, or important, or valuable enough, that they need to have additional revenue to support? So instead of having a discussion so much about what do we cut, maybe we have a discussion about what do we support? What might those things be? And I would say, it's not a conversation for the council alone to have. It is a conversation for the community to have, because I think if the community is going to step up and help to support these services, the community needs to have a hand in guiding us on what those would be. So I feel a lot better about having a conversation about what rises to the top that we need additional revenues to support, as long as my partners in the community are helping guide me in that decision, and provide input and direction on what that should be. We may need to have a little bit of both kinds of conversation, but I think that could be very helpful for us in guiding us as we go into a budget where we may actually have to talk about both ends of that spectrum in order to get to where we need to be.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. One of the interesting things I've heard discussed by some of our partners, for example, ElCog, I know one of the discussions that they've had, I believe at the table with you corporately, is how can, how can we take the assets that we have here and create new revenue streams with some of the things that we have? Again, my original point wasn't so much that, you know, we don't need perhaps to look at a balanced approach, that new revenues are a part of the equation as well. But what kind of new revenues is the thing I'd like us to expand the conversation on? I don't believe for a minute that you can pass a tax increase of any kind at this time in May or otherwise, for some of the reasons stated. So we, I think it's incumbent on us to get creative about how we talk about new revenues. One of those being, how can we, and I know the staff has, for the last several years, you've done a yeoman's job in, Sarah, leading the staff in really creative, innovative thinking, and I appreciate that. But, you know, there's always new developments in technology, and there are always new ways to take the assets we have, or the information that the city has, or the whatever that the city has, to create new revenue streams. Another thought is this, during the course of the conversation about City Hall, we have a facility reserved to take care of that, we have a couple of million in, I want to say it was telecom funds that were put up on the board for that. But another part of that discussion was that we have five or six million that the staff hadn't completely identified yet, but we thought we could come up with. At some point, there's some trade-offs that you have to have in this conversation as well, because I don't see that listed on the back of here. I see the service, potential service reductions, which is, again, an important part of this discussion. But if we're in one discussion one day, having a, saying that we can find five or six million in order to build the new building, then I'd like us to bring these conversations together, if we're talking about relative priorities.
And can I just respond to that? And I'll sound like a broken record, so stop me any time. For me, it's often that distinction between one-time and ongoing. Remember, this is, this is an ongoing money conversation. The City Hall's a one-time money conversation. So for example, in your supplemental budget that will come back, some of that marginal beginning working capital, we would recommend some of that one-time money go to City Hall. It could, it could be put into trying to fill the gap, but it, it'll fill the gap, because it's, it's not ongoing, so you get a very temporary, all you're doing is postponing the issue. And so that's, it's a little bifurcated for me on, for that.
And I appreciate that point, that's a really good one, and you have made that several times. I'm just trying to give voice to the kinds of, of things I hear from my constituents too, and, or that we read in the paper, people ask these kind of questions. That's right.
Good responses that make sense to people.
Thank you, sir.
Alan?
Yeah, when I look at whether or not I would support new revenues, I, first I look at, have we wrung out all the efficiencies out of the existing system that we have, that we can get? And I look at what we've done over the last several years, and the reductions that we've made, and the efficiencies that we've gotten. And, and, and we've done an admirable job. John, hats off to you and the staff for coming up with all these different ideas and implementation of over $24 million worth of changes, most of which hasn't affected yet service delivery. We've actually done some service delivery reductions already, so we're eliminating some of the things that the city used to do. We've already done some of that. We've, so have we done that? We wrung everything out, is kind of the first question. Then the second one is, do you have a, a strategy to spur investment in this locality so that we can then grow the tax base and increase our property taxes? And the answer to that is, yes, we do. We're doing as best as we can. Nobody has that pixie dust to be able to make that happen, and so that's not going to happen very quickly. So the next question I get to is, well, is there more we can do? And I think there is maybe some more things we can do on the efficiency side. And then, and I'm not sure that, and there's probably more we can do on the, on the investment side and the economic development strategy side. Then, then I get to, well, now we're, now we're down to, we've wrung all this out, we've done all this strategizing about this. Are we willing to let these services go and change the way that we deliver them? Or are we going to invest in the community and have these services be able to continue? And, and I think that's the question that we'll, that we'll face, what we'll put in front of the voters, if we get that far. Are these worth the extra dollars it would take to keep them? And when I think people see this list and the impact on, on what's going to happen in our community, I think they'll say yes. I think a lot of people thought that the, the property tax levy for roads would go down. In fact, some people at this table predicted that, and so it didn't happen. And in fact, when we renewed it, and actually increased it slightly, it overwhelmingly passed in this community, a 65%, almost 66% yes vote. So I'm actually buoyed by that, in that I think this community really cares about this kind of stuff. They care about the, the services that we provide, the parks, the restrooms, the fire stations, and, and neighborhood programs, and, and all the different things that we have on, that we would provide. And I think they're willing to invest in it. So I'm willing to look at, having, looking at the strategy of what it would take, what would it look like, how much would it cost to put that on the table and, and preserve these reductions in services?
For me, when you think about the fact, and I do think it's something that you can't say loudly enough, that we have about 125 in general fund.
Between 120 and 125.
And we cut 24. I mean, that is, that is a serious, that is a serious amount of our city general fund. And so we're down to the place where I think it's very reasonable for people to think, you've cut a lot, you've done everything you can do here. Now the question is, folks, what do you care about deeply in terms of the services that we provide? And what are you willing to do to make sure we can keep on providing this? Because we've certainly cinched in our belt, and we're feeling it come out of the other side of our bodies. So I just think we are actually to that, to that point, and I, and I think people are perfectly capable of having, having that discussion. Claire?
Yeah, I really appreciate this discussion and the different perspectives folks have about how we might approach looking at new revenues. It's definitely informative to me. And I appreciate Councilor Zelenka, you know, pointing out that we have really tightened our belts, and also the margin by which the road repair bond passed. And I think one of the big reasons that, that did pass is because the first time the voters passed it, the city kept faith with voters and delivered in a really effective way the services that we said would be delivered with that money. And that, I think that, no matter what we look at in terms of new revenues, we need to keep that in mind, that that is what folks are going to be expecting from us, that they're going to see the result of their investment in the city. So I think that's very critical. I'm, Councilor Farr referenced the fact that some companies have relocated outside the UGB, and I'm not familiar with those developments. I didn't know if someone could answer, speak to what.
We can, we can circle back with you. There are some, and we'd be happy to share that. We've shared some of those with council in the past, and we'd be happy to.
Okay, I'd appreciate that. That's all.
All righty. Anything else for the good of the order? Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor.
Why don't we, we have a few minutes left. Do you want to do the consent calendar?
Sure.
Would you like to put that motion out for that? Thank you for, thank you.
I would like to pull item B, though, just for a very brief, just for a couple of questions.
Okay.
The approval of the working agenda.
Okay, it's pulled.
Okay, I move to approve the items on the consent calendar. Second?
Seconded. All those in favor, please indicate. And in opposition, it passes. We're to item B. Go ahead.
Okay. The reason I pulled this is, I submitted two work session requests, one in April and one in June. And then, you know, I keep patiently waiting to see them pop up on the county working agenda, and they haven't, and I realize the plate's full. So I'm not, I'm not getting nervous or getting angry or anything like that. I know they'll pop up soon, but the first one that the other councillors, actually, it was Moore, agreed with was to reexamine the riverfront urban renewal district as a possible source of new revenues without raising taxes. The second one was a reexamination of the MPT program.
We have that scheduled?
Not to get rid of it, but to reexamine it and perhaps make it more in line with, with Portland's limited tax exemption program. And I think both of these are relevant, because, you know, to what we're talking about now. And so I just wanted to bring this up. I'm not going to rant and rave or anything like that, but I, I think they're very relevant to, to the discussions that we're having now, and so, I guess, I know there's a lot on the agenda, but if we could add those, I, I think that, you know, it will inform some of the budget discussions and human service agencies discussions and all kinds of things. I think, I think they, those two tie in pretty nicely with some of the problems that we're looking at now. So I just, that's the reason, only reason I pulled it. I'm not going to make a, any kind of resolution. I think I just wanted to bring that up.
You have it?
A portion of that MPT conversation around onsite management that came out of the capstone is actually next, on Wednesday, the 28th. So that, that's not the complete part of the conversation. I know there's more of the conversation. And just so, just a little bit how we schedule things on the agenda, partly it's a lot to do with just timing of issues. And so there are some things that are timely, whether they're budgets, or they're items that the council has specifically requested, that we bring them back by a certain time, or our conversations around opportunity villages, and those kind of categories. And then there are a variety of things that are kind of on this pending list that we also plug in, and as we move forward. And so you'll start seeing some of those as we move into the new year.
Good, thanks. Good, thanks. Yeah, no, I mean, we've been discussing some very important things, and Opportunity Village and all these other things, so I, I'll be patient, but I just wanted to bring it up and remind everybody. Thank you.
Well, speaking of things that aren't on the agenda, I was, I didn't see the Opportunity Village or micro housing project anywhere on the agenda at all.
December 10th. It'll be, it's not on this particular one, so when this gets published, we're also continually updating as, after this gets published. Yeah, so December 10th, we're.
Is that going to be during the council meeting?
Yeah, we're thinking actually, as post the 7:30 agenda, that agenda doesn't necessarily have to take a long time, and so we're currently thinking about putting it at the end of that.
Item 7, okay, good.
Or as a work session more than item 7, but yes.
Okay, I think we're ready to vote on Item B. All those in favor? Seven in favor, none in opposition, it passes. Thank you, and we'll reconvene at 7:30.